Good evening, welcome on this beautiful night. We will try to get through our exciting stuff so you all can get out and enjoy the weather. I'd like to welcome you to the May 14th, 4:00 PM regular work session of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you would all stand for a moment of silence and then followed by the pledge.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agendas presented?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Nancy, all in favor? That's unanimous. First up, we have presentation and discussion Inspire with Mr. Mike Sloupe.
Good afternoon, Dr. Bearden and members of the board. My name is Mike Sloupe and I am one of the assistant principals at DeSana Middle School. And I'm excited to present to you a little bit about the Inspire project that I worked on this year with my team members at DeSana involving the language proficiency test at the middle school level and the opportunities and challenges that we went through with that and the opportunities it provided our students that we're very proud of. So I want to walk you through that a little bit. It started really with a question, a pretty simple question, how can we serve our students better? And one of our eighth grade Spanish teachers came up to us in the summer and said, is our eighth grade Spanish one class the best way to serve all of our students who would like to take a world language? And so we thought about that a little bit. We talked with Michelle La Clausnix and we knew some of the work that she was doing with the language proficiency test at high school and she had introduced that to middle school. So we thought, could we use that as a tool to see if we could provide some more opportunities for our eighth grade students who had more Spanish background that were kind of bored in Spanish one in the past few years? So we took that and looked, the timing was right for us to kind of look into it. We are experiencing a good bit of diversity in our, in our school system with cultures and linguistic backgrounds. We have right around 52 different languages spoken from the home language survey with our students here in this county. And we are noticing that parents and students are inquiring about more opportunities for them. And we're seeing that at our school at DeSana as well. We have about 20 different languages spoken at DeSana and we had a lot of our students who were interested in doing something a little bit different with their fifth academic. So we decided to look into that and see what we could offer them. And in the summer last year, we also began a process with our Hispanic Parent Council who were asking for some more opportunities. So they were very much involved and instrumental in helping us look at this. So the language proficiency test looks at 13 different languages and allows students to test to see what their level of expertise is in those 13 different languages. When we looked at it in the fall, first semester of this, of this past year, we focused mostly at Spani- in Spanish because that's where we had some expertise with our teachers. And that was our largest population that we served with other languages. So we looked at our home language survey, we identified a number of eighth graders with Spanish as their primary language, and then we offered them the opportunity to take the language proficiency test to see if they could test out a Spanish one and have another opportunity to, to test into a higher Spanish in eighth grade. When we gave that survey, we gave it to 38 students. We started out with a smaller group and then the word kind of spread. And more students asked could they participate. So we actually kind of did three, a three-tiered testing approach. And 37 of those kids tested out a Spanish one pretty easily. So we looked at what else we could offer and we had about 40% who tested out of the first three Spanish because they were native speakers or heritage speakers and had a lot of experience. So we had a meeting with the parents to reveal those results. And this was an exciting meeting for our students because they, when they walked in with their parents, their parents had to come with them and they had no idea. They were very proud. You could see the sense of pride from their parents. They were very proud of their students and how they did on their, on their test. And we let them know how many credits they earned and they got to decide, do they want to keep those credits and put them on their transcript or they want to not accept those credits? And pretty much every student accepted those credits. We had nine students that accepted one credit of Spanish. And then we had 28 students that accepted two to three credits. And then, go ahead.
No, he said it's great.
Well, some students thought about, if I am that good, maybe I take the class and get a higher grade. So that's what they were, a lot of them would think initially. But the whole point of the language proficiency test is to place them appropriately. Because we were noticing that a lot of our students that were taking Spanish one, if they were really a Spanish two or three level, they were going to be bored in that class and we couldn't have challenged them like we wanted to. So, great question.
Is the proficiency test not just written and is it well-rounded, not just being able to speak or read, but it's, you know, write?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. So there's four parts to it. There's reading, listening, speaking, and writing. So they've got to do, and there's some that were very proficient at the listening and the reading, but the writing they struggled with and, or the listening they struggled with. So it gave them a score for each part and then gave them an overall score. And that's what the organization who does the test, it's an online test, and they score it and send us all the results back. So, good question. So the students that, that got the, the credits, five decided that they wanted to get this credit, but they wanted to be served in like a math enrichment or a language arts enrichment during the eighth grade year and then go into Spanish two as a freshman in high school, right? But they didn't have to take it as a, as an eighth grader. So that, that benefited them in that way. We did have six students that took an online Spanish two class for Forsyth Virtual and that was a great opportunity. They actually sat in the back of one of our Spanish one classes and got some support from our Spanish teacher, but also at the same time, they were submitting stuff online to their teacher and had that support as well. That was, had some unique challenges I'll come around to in a second. And then we had 26 students that got two or three credits and they were taking either native speakers one or native speakers two. And that was, we'd never offered that at the middle school level and, and not at our school. And we had, we really did that because we had a teacher that was a native speaker herself and we knew that she could take on that challenge and the kids were ready for that challenge. Through this process, we've been, one year, what have we learned? I think a big thing we learned is, is the virtual environment is not for all students. So we had, we did have six students who took the Spanish two virtually and maturity is a big thing there, independence, being able to meet deadlines, just a lot of things that they probably hadn't hit as hard in middle school yet that they will see a lot more in high school. Some of them weren't quite ready for that. So the, the high school, our, our teacher had to work with them about, you cannot miss a deadline. You've got to keep track of your assignments. And so the right student has to be put into that environment. So we'll, we will know that moving forward. The other thing is that we worked with our high schools counselors and with Michelle La Clausnix and other native speakers teachers at the high school level. And the group decided that native speakers one is the highest that we should offer at the middle school level. Just for maturity of content and preparing them for AP classes, which would be kind of the next step down the road. So moving forward, we will, we will only offer native speakers one in middle school. And we presented this to our LSC. They were very excited about it and were asking, well, what about other languages? Because we had a person on our LSC whose daughter, her, her son spoke Chinese and then we had some other languages and they're like, are y'all going to offer to the other languages in, in, with the language proficiency test? And we said, sure, we'll look into that. So that's what we've done this second time as we've started into the spring. Collaboration has been huge for us, talking with this group, this district collaboration that, with the world languages teachers was very helpful for us to make some decisions about placement and what should we offer and what's wise for us to offer and what do we need to hold off on? And then just coordination with Denmark and the, the language teachers over there have been very helpful, telling us kind of expectations for classes, what does a native speakers class need to look like so that we, just because it's at middle school level, we can still offer the same kind of experiences and rigor. We had our teacher go over and observe and work with those teachers to give her a better idea of the expectation so the kids are really prepared when they get to high school. And they were super collaborative with us on that. So we really appreciate that. So after we did that whole process, then we said, okay, let's do this sooner this next time. Because we did it at the very beginning of the year. We'd rather do it in spring to prepare for next year. So that's what we've done. We've just finished this process. So we identified students early, we went through all the 13 languages that are offered and we found that our students spoke seven of those languages. And we kind of publicized it all over. We publicized it at our cultural arts night, we publicized it on our website, we announced it and had students come in and meet in a big group and I explained the process. So we had about 43 students who were interested. They signed up to take it. We had then some parent meetings to explain to the parents, like Ms. Morrissey said, the four domains of the test and what they'd have to do. And we realized the last time we did it, that the speaking part was the most difficult because they were in a room and they were a little embarrassed. And if they spoke quietly, they weren't going to probably get as high a score. So we did a practice session where they got to speak and practice and they did the writing as well, just to give them a feel for what to expect. We got those, we did that in March, we got those results back and once again, we were very proud of our students. Most of the students this time, we did seventh graders so we could plan for eighth grade. And so we had seven students that earned one world language credit, 13 that earned two, and then 23 that earned three world language credits. Those students are typically your native speakers in whatever language. We had Arabic, we had Chinese, we had Hindi was another big one, and then we had Spanish and Italian, I think were the main ones that we had. So what that means for us is we are ready to place these students for next year. We, it looks like we'll have a little over 20 kids in a native speakers one class. They're very excited about it. We want to make sure that they understand this is like a equivalent to Spanish three. So it's a higher level class with higher rigor and it will prepare them for taking AP Spanish in high school. So I think the, the final thoughts I wanted to share with you, that the reason we did this was really to try to provide appropriate challenge for our students. That we felt like we had a number of students that were ready for higher level languages so we wanted to provide that opportunity. We wanted to serve them at their level. It also, we noticed, this is a benefit we didn't really think about ahead of time, but it really created a sense of community and a belonging for our students. They were very excited and proud for their abilities and that that, what they work on on the weekends and other times, or what is just native to them, was going to translate into some high school credits that they could use later on. So they were proud of that. And it just really celebrates their unique streaks as students. So that is the Inspire project that we worked, I worked on this year. Any questions?
Tell me, seeing an Inspire presentation, I think what topic could they possibly come up with? And this is, I love that it's very unique, but it's so specific to DeSana. I think that's awesome.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I love the cultural diversity of our school. And we held our first cultural arts night this year and had this as part of it to share about it. And it, it really is a unique community and our, our students thrive there and they love the diversity and the unique experiences that all of our students have. So I appreciate it very much too.
Forward to see where this goes.
The thing about this is it gives kids that are not, not excel in other things, a chance to excel and be.
I totally agree with that. Yes, ma'am.
It's cool.
You'll have to come back. I know you're going to be doing some different things next year, but we look forward to seeing where this goes.
Yes, ma'am. They're going to continue it. So we've set them up for next year.
There you go.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next, we have Megan Thompson with her Inspire project.
Don't you walk down second.
I know. Right?
That is a hard one.
No pressure. Well, good afternoon to the board and to Dr. Bearden. I am Megan Thompson. I'm one of the assistant principals at Lakeside Middle School and I'm very excited to be here and share my presentation on the power of connection. The reason why this was my topic is because I come from three years at an elementary where you're very connected to students and the one thing that we've talked about as administrative team is why are we not as connected at the middle school level? Why does it all of a sudden go away and how can we fix that? So we really decided to focus on that this year. We decided that we needed to have a new vision and a new mission and beliefs and so, one, we, we felt that our vision needs to be the same as the county. So quality learning and superior performance for all. But our mission has always been about leadership and academics, kindness and excellence, but we added in the pride piece. And this is actually our SEL program, but it's also what our beliefs are, which are positivity, respect, integrity, diligence and effort. And that has nothing to do with academics. It's about being a good human. And that's what we want to create with our middle schoolers. But something was still missing after all of this. And what was missing was the connection. And our students in middle school are the most social group in the generation, I learned this from Todd Shirley, and, but they're the most isolated in, in the history of our world. And it's because they, everything they do is behind the screen and they may be talking to hundreds of people, but are they really connecting with people? They have a thousand friends, but do they really have any friends? And so we want to create a Lakeside family. So that is made up of not only our staff and our students, but also our, the parents of our students. And so the first thing we did, and this is, you might have seen this on Twitter out there, a couple of schools have done this, is the teachers were asked, they were given a list of all the kids in the grade and they were asked, do you know their name? Do you teach the student? Then they had to check, can you pick their face out in the hallway? Not just with a seating chart, but do you actually know who they are? Do you know how they're doing academically, not only in your class? But the most important column that we looked at was, do you know a fact about them that I have not told you? Do you know that they only live with their mom? Do you know that they love soccer? Do you know that they miss every Friday because they travel for a sport? Do you know what's going on in their life? And what we found was that we know, we know them, but do, but we don't truly know in-depth facts about them. So then we gave a survey to our students and almost 1,100 took the survey and there was 46 that could not name an adult in the building that they could go talk to. And there was 43 that could not name another student that they could talk to. And then we had 14 students that could not name a student or an adult. And when we first shared these results, they said, that's okay, Megan, that's not that many. And I said, but there's more than one. So one's too many for us. Every single student that walks into Lakeside, Lakeside should be able to go to any adult or find a student to talk to. And why do they not feel connected? So we decided to take our survey and take our check marks and say why. And so we sat down at grade levels in our team meetings, because we've created teams. And each student, each teacher chose three students and they focused on those and they were very intentional, not to just go up and say, hey, I need to know a fact about you. They, they just had conversations with them. And it would be amazing because teachers would stop by and say, oh my gosh, did you know that, that, you know, he's moved four times? Did you know about? And I was like, that's pretty cool. You're getting to know your kids. And it was awesome. So then we started to do different connect activities. We had our student connect activities where, because our students were sharing that they felt like in elementary school, you get to go to recess and you do all these fun things and then you come to middle school and it's like academics. Academics for sports. So we started Fresh Air Friday. So every third week, they go out as a grade level and they get to have recess and play. We started Spark Bucks. I know, it'd be great to do it every day. We started Spark Bucks, which is a positive incentive program. So if they show service or they're present to class, they show up on time, they show high academics, they're responsible, or they're just kind to others, they get bucks. And then it's like, we, throughout the year, they do incentive days and like the last day of the school year, we're going to have a big like festival and if you have a certain amount of Spark Bucks, you should get to attend. And we have Day of Service. This picture is the day of our sixth grade Day of Service. And then we also were doing Pride, like I told you before, and that's our homeroom and that's our SEL program that's created by our counselors and a teacher leadership team. Then we had Staff Connect. And this was something that was incredibly important to me because I feel like as administrators, we need to know our staff, but our staff needs to be a family. And I think that Lakeside's been around for 10 years and they started very young and then they, everyone started to have babies and families and they slowly are spreading apart. And so the school, the staff shared at the end, when they were asked for feedback, they said, we just want to do stuff together. And so monthly staff, our monthly staff connect began. And so we did, we went to Daddy O's. We were the biggest team for the VYOT run, just saying. Just want to point that out. Meals by Grace, which was the favorite and we've actually gone back and done that one again. We've had gone to basketball games, Winter Fest, and we supported local businesses. And the feedback from the staff was, we want to do more service together where we can bring our kids and teach them how to give back to the community. This past Saturday was our end of the year staff connect where we did a mud run. We did a cross-country stampede mud run. I was very proud that I got Kim Head out and she, she, she did her first mud run. I was very excited and it was so fun. And the teachers that came said, we're doing this as an annual event.
Where is that at?
It's right near Watson Road.
I wondered, I recognize.
Yeah, it was so fun. It's one of my passions, so I was able to share it with the students. We held our first parent connect night and it was about technology safety because as I was saying before, kids are not as, they're connected through technology, but our parents need to be informed about what kind of technology they're on. And so we had three technology sessions and then we had Katie Newman, our mental health coordinator, she came and shared about balance, about how to balance everything and end of the night. And we had a really great turnout and the teachers that attended said, we need to do this again. So we plan on holding those next year as well. Then as a South Cluster, we held Family Connect Night, which was one night a month. You're not allowed to have homework. You cannot have tests the next day, projects cannot be due and you are to connect with your family. That's all you're supposed to do. And so we had people share on Twitter, different pictures. So then, this is just to remind you where we were. So we had these students that were connected and so they, these were our target students. Well, in the end, 41 out of 46 ended up connected with an adult. And 39 out of 43 were connected with another student and eight out of 14 were connected with both. So it's not perfection, but we are making progress. And what we found was that if we set a target, that we will hit it. But we did find that there's other students out there that maybe aren't as connected. So this is going to be an ongoing process for us. So moving forward, we're going to continue to do these staff surveys with the checklist and with the students' surveys three times a year, just to measure, see, keep a pulse on our kids. We're going to continue our connect activities. We're going to continue our SEL program because we feel like that's really important. We're adding mindfulness class first semester as a pilot, which we actually, the way that we got the people to be in the mindfulness class was through these surveys, these kids that really need to be with other kids. And then we're also adding an SEL component into our unit plans for all subject areas. Because what we found was that people say, well, it's academic time. That's what we need to do. We have standards, we have to get through it. But as these quotes show, is without relationships, it doesn't matter. Because we're in Forsyth County and, and our kids will learn. But if, if we don't have relationships, they're not going to grow. We like to say that it's better at the lake and we do believe that the power of connection is why it continues to be better at the lake. And the quote that I left up here was just that, you know, we want our teachers to walk in and we want to be the reason why our kids come to school that day. And we want them to enjoy coming to school. This is my favorite TED Talk. So I think the staff at Lakeside would tell you that they've heard this quote many times from me, just that I do believe that if you're a gifted child or a special ed child or an ESAL, or maybe you're just a middle of the road and you're just an A, B child, that every single person should have a champion. And they should be able to come and find an adult that is going to do what's right for them. And the other quote that she always says is, people don't learn from people that they don't like. And so maybe you have to find a way to connect with even the hardest students. My reflection from this Inspire is that when you're a leader, you lead from the back and that you have to keep everyone on the right track and that you can't give up on people. I can't say that there wasn't frustrating moments where excuses might have been made of why we don't have connections with students, but, but we're getting there. And so I just think that connection, it can happen at middle school. It doesn't happen only at elementary. That's all. Any questions?
I just want to say, this is amazing. And I think, I believe that the key to education is the connection between the educator and the student. And one of the things I talk about a lot about is the educators, not only the teachers, it's the administrators, it's the classified employees, it's the cafeteria staff, it's the custodians. Were they involved also in this?
Yes, so everyone knew about, you know, they did not have to pick three, but, but as a staff, we're, we want to try to connect as well with like classifieds, so they were invited on all staff connect. But we actually, we had a student who, who shared that like his person was one of the custodians. That was very cool. So we were able to tell him.
This reminds me of our trip to Nashville and what we saw there was that they did a very similar process where they really made sure they connected. They would sit down, have meetings with all the administrators, teachers, they'd talk about a specific student, you know what's going on in their life. And we came back from that and we wanted our high schools to create the academies so they'd have that connection. And I love that you're finding another way to do it at the middle school level.
Great stuff. Thanks, Megan.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the initial budget presentation for fiscal year 2020 with Mr. Chris Kreiner.
And before Chris starts, I'm just going to make a couple of comments and turn it over to Chris. And this is over the FY '20 proposed budget. Number one, our number one goal, number one responsibility is the safety of our students and staff. We will continue with the local funding of our student advocacy specialists, which we started this year. We will have more counselors than allotted in the funding formula. Our goal of a school resource officer on each campus and two at each of our traditional high schools. We're hoping to accomplish that by the beginning of the new school year. Last year, we ended with 26 school resource officers. We're currently at 35. So we've made a gain of nine throughout the course of the year. We expect to meet our goal of one on each campus and two at each high school, hopefully by the beginning of the year. We need one more at Forsyth Central High School and one more at West. And once again, I want to thank Sheriff Freeman and all of our outstanding school resource officers for their dedication and commitment to our students, staff and community. This budget also continues to, our focus on social emotional learning, on educating the whole child. We'll maintain our involvement in the Total Wellness Collaborative to ensure that we continue to partner with our community on providing the necessary resources and support to our students and families. We are moving forward with personalized learning. Nine schools will be part of the cohort in 1920. We will provide them, if this budget is passed as presented, with the professional coaching and support necessary to be successful. We'll continue to offer competitive salaries and benefits to all employees. This budget does include the 3,000 a year salary increase for our certified staff and a 2% cost of living adjustment for our classified staff. And we appreciate the support of our new governor, lieutenant governor, and members of the local delegation for providing the resources to assist with these increases and for fully funding QBE for the second consecutive year. We'll continue our literacy initiative. Not long ago, you heard a report on Art, American Reading Company. That will be expanded to first grade. We've been very successful in that initiative. This budget maintains our millage rate at 17.3, which I'm very proud of. We will maintain a healthy fund balance. We will continue to be good financial stewards with the goal of retaining our five-star, five-star financial efficiency rating and AAA bond ratings. And just a couple of reminders for the public, we're the only system in Georgia that received a five-star financial efficiency rating every year since that distinction has been made. We're one of two systems in Georgia with a AAA bond rating. And we have the lowest per pupil cost among our state's largest school systems and the highest academic achievement. And that's a very good formula to maintain. I want to thank Chris for all of his work and all of the department heads in putting this proposal together. This process starts for us back in the fall. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of energy and this is Chris's first year putting together a budget for your proposal and he has done an outstanding job. I want to turn it over to him.
Thank you, Dr. Bearden. I appreciate that. Just thank you.
There we go.
All right. I will go over, the first page of the slide presentation is budget highlights. So I think a lot of these, Dr. Bearden, just, some of them touched on, so I'll just go through these, the ones that we haven't touched on. The first one is, as y'all know, the incredible growth we've had over the last two decades. No district has encountered such a long and steady growth pattern. We anticipate between 1,500, 1,700 student growth for this upcoming year, which will put us right at or above 50,000 students, right behind Atlanta Public Schools. Right now, we're currently the seventh largest, seem to be the sixth largest. So the general fund budget does, Dr. Bearden mentioned, $3,000 raise for all certified employees and a 2% raise for all classified. So when you look, as we talked about in the budget here, the projected increase in expenditure So the general fund budget does, Dr. Bearden mentioned, three thousand dollar raise for all certified employees and a two percent raise for all classified. So when you look, as we talked about in the budget here, the projected increase in expenditures is for, hold the salary benefit aside, for growth positions, which we'll go through that summary here in a minute. Salary increases, which I just mentioned, as well as those who qualify for a step increase. Sometimes in the step process, you may not actually, you may have stepped out of the salary scale where there is no more steps to go, or you may, at some scales, it actually starts skipping toward the end, where you may skip a year. So that's why it's those who qualify. And then the TRS employer rate increase, which was very small this year compared to the four percent we saw last year, it was about two point two four percent for this current year, for FY20. FY19, remember, was about, I think it was four point oh nine percent increase. So that effect was very nudgeable. It was a small effect this year of around five, about six hundred thousand dollars, which we'll see in a minute. Combining all that together with the growth positions, salary increases, and the TRS employer rate, salary benefits roughly thirty-three point nine million dollar increases. Roughly ninety-seven percent of the increase in the budget, you'll see in a second. Overall, revenues are continuing to grow and keeping pace with that student growth. Tax digest estimated to grow six point five four percent of what we have. We fully expect that to be a little bit larger number by the time we're finished. Again, that typically increases, we'll get the final digest normally about the middle of June. So I anticipate that number will actually be higher than six point five four percent. State revenue, nine percent, as Dr. Bearden mentioned, fully funded QBE for the second year in a row, as well as funding the certified, the three thousand dollar raise for all certified employees. So a lot of that represents that nine percent increase, as well as the enrollment growth that we've seen and mentioned. Again, for the fifth consecutive year, this budget proposes the millage rate at seventeen point three mil. Projected general fund budget has a fund balance at fourteen point one percent of the projected expenditures. We fully anticipate that'll be closer to fifteen by the time we finish the process, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Again, per pupil cost, I won't go over that again. And again, the five-star efficiency rating, as well as the AAA bond rating. So you have the general fund overview, same document we discussed in the public hearing. Again, you see revenue growth of seven point seven seven percent. Expenditure growth, a little bit higher than that, seven point eight seven percent. So projected right now, excess revenue over expenditures of roughly one million, three fifty-two, seven oh five, which would again, leave us with an ending fund balance of roughly sixty-seven point five million. Again, fully anticipate that's going to be closer to fifteen percent. As the digest is still in the preliminary stages, I feel like that's going to grow, as well as the FY19, I feel like we'll end between a million to a million and a half there, and we put a zero in there just to be conservative. Factoring all that in, I think we'll end up being close, again, to fifteen percent. Last year's budget was around fourteen point nine percent, I believe. Expenditures by function, again, down at the very bottom, you'll see the total change, seven point eight seven percent increase. Of that thirty-four point nine million, ninety-seven percent of that is salary and benefit, three percent operating expense growth. So looking back FY19, we were eighty-eight point nine percent salary and benefits, eleven point one operating. Again, when you see the new positions, that shifted a little bit higher with the raises and everything else as well, to eighty-nine point seven eight percent. So roughly ninety percent in salary and benefits, and roughly ten percent operating expense. No different than any other school district in the state of Georgia. Typically, that's, you want that because that's, that means you've got, that's the classroom. It's hitting the classroom on a daily, daily basis. And systems normally, that's what you see. It's always in the high eighties and then ten to eleven percent operating. Again, the comparison by function, I mentioned this earlier in the, in the hearing, seventy, almost seventy-three percent instruction, which is where you want that. Sixty-five percent is considered the standard by the state and on a national level. We're eight percent above that. That's something we definitely put a lot of pride in as well, that we, we want those resources in the classroom, which is what our main goal is every day. Again, salary compared to operations, I won't spend any time on that one. Salary benefit changes, here's a list of, at the very top, you'll see the school-based positions that we propose adding. The second level is the non-school base, which includes transportation, special education, social workers, psychologists, one technology position. So a total new positions of one hundred and eighty-eight. Referencing back to FY19's budget, if you factor out Denmark and Alliance, because those were new schools, we added one hundred and eighty-one positions in FY19, not counting Denmark and Alliance. If you go back and look at your budget, the same presentation last year, you'll see it was over two hundred, but that's because of the schools. And most of that was administrative. Because what happens when we add a new school, typically teachers move from another school to that school. So you're not adding teachers, you're adding administrative, clerical, custodians at that level. So again, one hundred and eighty-eight new positions. All of these, whether being school-based or non-school-based, are all based on growth. Some of the school-based positions, as Dr. Bearden mentioned, instructional coaches, some of the student support, honestly, are to help maintain the per pupil ratio that we've maintained since two thousand and twelve, on average, twenty-three point seven five to one. So that allows us to add that additional support at a school level where we can keep those ratios at the same level.
Whether they be in the classroom or in the buildings.
Yes, in the building, with instruction being their main focus. And of course, I won't go through the entire list, but if y'all have questions, I'll definitely answer them. The middle school counselors is to make that ratio to kind of hone in on that a little bit, to get that more in line. Keep it in mind, the recommended ratio is two hundred and fifty students to one. We're getting closer to that. It's, to get to that ratio is very challenging. So we're in the, you know, high threes, low fours on some of those, but that gets a little bit more in line with that.
Just so you know, that recommendation comes from the American Counseling Association.
Yes, thank you.
That was something, we had added one to each high school last year, and we had some elementaries that needed a second. So this was something we had hoped to reach till we get to the middle school level as well. So I'm very excited to see that.
Yeah, we're trying to, as we, you know, trying to get that ratio down a little bit by a little bit each year that we can afford. So that's kind of what that goal is there. Bus drivers, again, due to growth. You know, that's, some of that's looking at the route efficiency as well and trying to figure out how to best manage that. Special education, we've grown twenty-seven percent over the last five to six years in special education. So just continuing to add. The compliance piece is huge there, as you know, from a legal aspect on special education, just having, making sure you've got somebody covering the compliance piece.
And the better we are at it, the more the word gets out.
Yes, ma'am. Yep, that's very true.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for that.
Trying to think anything else on here, and we can go back and answer, I'll answer any questions you might have. Down at the very bottom, you see the step increase, roughly a cost of five point three million, the salary increase, almost fourteen million. TRS, as I mentioned, very small this year, around six hundred thousand, and then adding a supplement for our head custodians, which is around forty-five thousand. I felt like that was needed.
Talk to TRS real quick. What is that increase? Is it funding the program? Is it due to lack of investment interest they were making and they need to fund it better?
I can't speak specifically to that. I know the basic, anytime you hear anything from them, it's just to get that, the fund balance lower, where they feel the fund is at a comfortable level. All indications are that probably will not increase for FY21. Let's typically set that rate, I mean, from August, it's normally around August, September of, like, of two thousand and twenty. So, I mean, we'll, or actually of this year. So we'll know what that rate is for FY21 way in advance. They typically give us about two.
Went up so much last year, like ten million, so this is a huge, for us, a huge.
But with the improvement of the economy, you know, their investments are doing much, much better.
That's right.
How it is, does it get better?
Right. Yes, it's definitely, definitely better than the last several years. And the forecast, forecast for it to continue to get better.
Right. And I will point out, there's no health insurance increase for the school system. I won't say that at the employee level because all those rates are set, you know, at the end of the year. But for the school system contribution, we're putting in eleven. If you participate in the plan, we're putting in eleven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars per employee, whether you're classified or certified, a year. And that's, that did not change in this year's budget, which is honestly the first, actually last year was a half year, and then this year is the first full year that that hasn't changed in the last five, six, seven years. It continued to go up to a certain level and now. So again, those are things we don't necessarily know, and those are totally things out of our control. Those are mandates from the state, from those different boards, Department of Community Health, and then of course, the TRS Board as well.
One of the things when we do our budget, we, you know, once we have these positions, they go on forever. So when the state thankfully did the three thousand dollar raise and the two percent, which is awesome, we made, when we make decisions locally for what's good for Forsyth, when we added the student advocacy specialist last year and the additional counselors at the schools that we feel passionate about, that number, that's our local fund. So some of that thirteen million is coming from the state, but some of it is just from us because we feel that's what makes us stand out and makes us better.
That's correct.
It's worth it.
Mr. Kreiner, what is the ESM, I guess it's elementary school, middle school student support?
You want to speak to that one?
Yes, actually, Cindy.
Cindy, that's a hard one. Not the personalized learning positions, but the other.
Yeah, the eleven positions that are up there in the school-based positions.
Yeah, it's making it more equitable.
Equity thing.
Do you want to come up here, just so we can?
That's more than a, I encourage you to talk to her more about that because it's more than a one-minute conversation.
Just the one with the formula, Cindy.
Yeah, adjusting that.
Just a brief overview of like the responsibilities and where they're going to go. I mean, that's not enough for every elementary school or middle school. So is it, is it something that you're continuing that you've already had in place, or?
It is partial in place and partial increase. We've had in place some extra support for schools that needed it. Our principals have told us that not all schools are created equal. And so they've said, there, if you've got a high free and reduced lunch account, if you have a lot of special ed, self-contained classes, those kind of things, it makes you different at a school. So we have contributed to them on occasion. For example, a good example is coming elementary. With their population, their free and reduced, and a number of special ed classes, we have given them additional staff members. This way, we came up with a formula so that we could do it equitably throughout the school system. And every school is able to use that however they need it. It might be administrative help in one school, it might be a coach in another school, it might be in the classroom in another school, it might be an interpreter in another school. So they get to use them as they see. But across the system, it is now formulated with a formula so that we can make sure we're equitable across the system and giving them what they need.
Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation. That helps out a lot.
I'm going to continue on, and we can, like I said, come back to any of these. Again, this is the revenue breakdown. See total local revenue is about six and a half percent. State, right at nine percent. Digest, down at the very bottom, you'll see the millage rate staying the same, commission of two and a half percent, all that. Two and a half percent is consistent. So again, a six point five four percent increase that we actually think will be higher than that, once we get the final numbers from the tax assessor's office, that's Kirkpatrick. So again, I think we've hit on most of those. Revenue comparison, fifty-two percent state roughly, and then forty-eight percent local, which is very typical of most every school district in the state. Millage rate, as we mentioned, the last five years, and again, we're proposing seventeen point three, and again, a debt service millage of two point four one eight. The cost per pupil, here's a breakdown, shows that we have the lowest, based on the two thousand and eighteen information from the Department of Education, which is the most, the information that's currently available to us, FY19 will be available around, normally about October.
And that's the number they calculated, so it's very equal across all systems.
Yes, it is.
Not open interpretation.
That's correct. We have a report that's due to the state, every school system, state ordered by September thirtieth, and it captures all the information, same function, same everything, same chart of accounts, and then the state takes that information, prepares all the per pupil. And they, they lump certain functions together and they do it in different ways, but yeah, it's, it's the same, consistent for every school system. The last two slides, school food services, we've always included this one. Again, you can see fund balance down at the very end, one point six million, so still in the black there, which is good. Again, seeing the same trend there, the revenues, expenditures have been exceeding the revenues, mostly, you think about, the majority of the school food, our school food service employees are classified employees, when the health insurance costs are rising at such a rapid rate, it's just trying to keep up with that. And fortunately, you know, we have a low free and reduced percentage, which obviously means you get less revenue as well. So that, it's a double-edged sword there as well. So, you know, continuing to manage this, through the process, we're, we're happy we still have a positive fund balance there. That's our goal, is to maintain that positive. If it were to become negative, of course, the general fund would have to pitch in and help with that. So at this point.
Last four years, it's been, it's been close.
We're still, yeah.
And that's with no increases.
Mrs. Bearden does a great job maintaining that. Trust me, it's on her radar. She feels very, she does not want that to go into the red. So, I mean, we've had several conversations on how we can kind of manage that, and she does a great job managing it.
Amazing that it pays, almost pays for itself.
Yeah, that's, where we're at, we still feel good there. Oh, debt service, again, with the digest growing, these numbers continue to, you can see down at the very bottom, we project we'll end the year with a fund balance of almost thirty-six million in debt service. One thing we do every year is we take a look at our analysis of our debt service. We do that with CityGrief, who does our bond issues, and we try to figure out what makes the most sense to come out of the debt service millage, what makes the most sense to come out of splosh revenues that we receive. So we'll continue to do that analysis. With a growing piece here, you know, that allows us some opportunities to do stuff with some of the splosh revenues, just general maintenance and upkeep at some of our schools as well.
Excited about that.
So it's a continual process to monitor this, and this is something we'll continue to work through.
I have a real quick question on that, and then I'll leave you alone, I promise. The state legislation has guidelines for the fund balance for the M and O. Do they have the same thing for debt services?
They don't. There's no restrictions on debt service. I mean, you don't want to get to a point where you, you know, you say that was a hundred million, that would probably be, you know, but, and I think that's the key thing we do every year, is we look at an analysis of that. Like what, what do we think splosh is going to do? Where are we at with the tax digest? How can we continue to work?
Pay things down, yeah.
And how to best utilize both of those working together?
You always write a big check, at least in February each year, it seems.
Yes.
End of January, February.
Yeah, that's the big one. The August first payment is just interest, but the February first payment is principal interest, that's always a big one.
Any other questions? Again, I know you're available.
Yes, anytime, any. The plan, again, is to, you know, this will be an action item at the board meeting next week, we'll have one more public hearing as well.
So just here, is there like a schedule you hear from the tax assessor, or just kind of get an update when they have one? It's just, I know it's, we keep, it gets changed and changed, but just as you hear stuff?
Yeah, what I try to do with Ms. Kirkpatrick is about every two weeks, email her to try to get an update, and typically, when in the next week, I normally hear from her. I think last year, we got the final digest. It was right before y'all voted on the final budget. We couldn't quite get it worked in where we could do the millage rate hearings. So it was around June twentieth is when we got the final digest last year. But what I'll do is stay in touch with her, just continue.
Have we set the dates yet for the next round?
I don't think we've set in June. I think we need to sit down.
Start looking at that.
Yeah, and what we try to do is figure out when we're going to get that final digest, because we can try to do the millage rate.
Be good to get some penciled-in dates on our calendars, because that's just a hard time of year.
Sandy and I will look at that, because with the millage rate, we tried to get it where y'all wouldn't have to do it the Fourth of July, we last year, and unfortunately, we ended up having to do it a little bit later in July. We were hoping to get the digest a little sooner last year. If we could get a little sooner, that'd be great. We can do what we need to do.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank y'all. Appreciate it.
All right, next we have the bus radio project with Mr. Michael Satterfield.
Good afternoon, Dr. Bearden and members of the board. Pleasure to be with you again. I wanted to take an opportunity to just explain a little bit about the bus radio project that has been shared with you as a presentation discussion item today. With your consideration and review of this, of this item in mind, the Forsyth County Schools' transportation and school safety departments have been working this year on the details of a project that would allow Forsyth County Schools to improve and expand its school bus radio network through a partnership with Forsyth County. I'd like to thank, first of all, our Forsyth County colleagues who've worked with us on this project, specifically Chris Grimes, who's the current director of the Forsyth County Emergency Management Agency, and his staff. Chris and his team have worked with us hand in hand this year to make sure that the legal and technical specifications for this project were clear and agreeable both to Forsyth County and to Forsyth County Schools. Where we stand today, Forsyth County Schools operates and supports its own school bus radio network. This radio network is supported by hardware and infrastructure that's owned solely by Forsyth County Schools. This equipment is housed in a space that we lease from a private vendor that provides us access to a radio transmission tower located on Sonny Mountain. Our current network is aging, and it contains both digital and analog components. This radio equipment, provided on FCF school buses and throughout the Transportation Department, is of various types and model years, that is fully capable of transmitting effectively on our current network. Our current school bus network allows for all radio traffic on a maximum of two channels. We've learned that the analog components of our current network are becoming more difficult to service and repair and maintain, as some parts of this network are no longer in production. Although our current school bus radio network is serviceable and meets the needs of our community today, it will most likely not provide the reliability or capacity for growth that Forsyth County Schools will need to provide reliable, effective school bus radio communication into the foreseeable future. The immediate benefits of the proposed school bus radio project to Forsyth County Schools and its stakeholders would include the following. One, it would strengthen the radio communications network between Forsyth County Schools, the Forsyth County School Safety Office, Forsyth County Schools' transportation, and our first responders in the community, including emergency management services, the sheriff's office, and the fire department. It would improve radio communications and responsiveness within the Forsyth County Schools' Transportation Department, between bus driver, dispatch, transportation supervisors, and our maintenance shop. It would increase the transmission quality, reliability, and network coverage of the Forsyth County Schools' transportation radio network immediately and into the foreseeable future. And finally, it would increase the size and capacity of the Forsyth County Schools' transportation radio network to accommodate the continued growth of the school system and provide reliable service through the foreseeable future. You have six documents that I've shared that, that outline the details of this project. The first two documents are an 800 megahertz radio user agreement and a cell tower lease agreement, both intergovernmental agreements with Forsyth County. These agreements have been vetted by the appropriate Forsyth County staff and Forsyth County School District personnel, including legal, safety, technology, transportation, and finance. These intergovernmental agreements would allow Forsyth County Schools simply to access the radio infrastructure currently operated by Forsyth County. Basically, the radio communications equipment owned and operated by Forsyth County Schools would be hosted on a radio network infrastructure supported by Forsyth County, and would include access to a local radio tower on Sonny Mountain through a lease with Forsyth County. In addition to approving these two agreements with Forsyth County, this project would require Forsyth County Schools to approve an investment of approximately $1.6 million to upgrade and update its current school bus radios and related equipment. The other four documents that have been provided to you today provide the details on the equipment upgrades that would be necessary, and these upgrades are necessary to ensure that all school system radio equipment would meet the minimum technical specifications required for compatibility and access to the Forsyth County radio infrastructure. As shared above, these agreements and investments would result in immediate overall increase in transportation safety and reliability for Forsyth County Schools and its stakeholders. As you know, we currently, we currently transport approximately 29,000 students a day on Forsyth County school buses. The improved radio network would be 100% digital. All components would be reliable and more readily serviceable now and into the foreseeable future. As stated earlier, this project would improve the transmission quality, reliability, and network coverage of the Forsyth County Schools' bus radio communications network. The quality of the network would then be comparable to that used by Forsyth County's first responders and Forsyth County's 911 center. Just as important, the Forsyth County School Bus Radio Network would increase in terms of size and capacity, growing to expand to six separate talk groups, as opposed to the current two channels we currently use.
Having one of our X safety people over, any MS now? Looks that well. Thank you, that was very detailed, but that's good stuff.
Well, I appreciate y'all's time. Have a great afternoon.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wunning, construction update, like old times.
Well, good afternoon. Fortunately, all of our projects are proceeding well, and as we're transitioning from design into construction, we've added aerial photos, similar to what we've done in the past, and will continue to do that. So, beginning with our high schools, at Alliance Academy, the precast erection is complete for the parking decks, slab on grade in progress, elevator, other interior finishes being lighting, sprinklers will be underway, and obviously, we are sensitive to the added students and the driving population that's going to be coming in August, so we're accelerating that project, and that'll be 600 cars when we're complete. East High School is off to a great start with the site work. I'll elaborate with the supplemental photos. ACE and Forsyth County Performing Arts Center design is rapidly proceeding, such that we anticipate procurement of general contractors during late September, early October, and we'll begin construction then. Several of our projects are, have been queued up the past couple months in terms of procurement, engineering, long lead, item procurement, such that we can start construction hitting the ground running on West Forsyth, that's the 20 classroom additions, South Forsyth High School, the football, baseball concessions and restrooms, the performing arts centers at North Central South, and again, that's really rigging, lighting, the seats, a well-needed renovation and upgrade to those. So, for the photos, as you can see, Alliance parking deck is, is well on its way. Because we were landlocked, you might have noticed the slab on grade is not in yet, we had to walk the crane out. There was no way to get the slab on grade in first, lock yourself in, so that's a little different. It's, it's a nuance of construction, but in case you were wondering why the slab on grade isn't in, it's because we're landlocked. But progressing really well, and aesthetically, it's, it's great, right? The brick matches the building. The whole site plan of Alliance really came out well, we'll be pleased with that. And again, just functionally, we're well aware of the added students driving that'll be there this fall that weren't there in our first year. Similarly, great aerial photo of what we are doing at Central. So, following the cursor, right, the main project is an approximate 3,000-seat grandstand, and depending on if the seats are 18 inches or 24 inches, you're going to probably hear a couple different numbers of 2,700 or 3,200. It depends on your interpretation, because bleachers don't have physical seats, so, but that's an approximation. So, the, a lot of the work that really doesn't go unnoticed, but it was critical, is that site on this entire left-hand side, the grade was significantly raised to achieve this, and then the complication is retaining wall. So, following the cursor, all of that retaining wall is in. So, it takes a couple months to get there, you don't see that progress, but then when the superstructure happens, that'll move very quickly. This area is the new concessions restroom area, and then we expand the existing locker room. This is an aerial photo of East Forsyth High School. To orient yourself, right, there's Jodlem Down Road. What you see in each of the brown spots is seven retention ponds that are required for the 90-acre site, so that's what makes that a little different. So, wherever you see green is still obviously initial condition. I say that to say, in two days, we will have the county inspection of the detention ponds all complete, and then mass excavation can start Friday. The next photo, to give you a little better orientation, so we've superimposed the site plan of, of what the campus will be. Obviously, this being the building, similar to Denmark in nature, but various improvements were made. The competition football field to the left, softball and baseball in this area, student and staff parking here, visitor parking up front, and then the bus lot coming in off that side. Again, the campus and layout's a little different compared to our other high schools, because we really only have one main access road versus many of our high schools being on a corner or three streets, but...
Just to be clear, your retention ponds you're speaking of, those are for building? The ponds are for building, or are they the post-retention?
Both. To answer your question, both. So, we have five permanent detention ponds that will be in place, and given erosion control and environmental strictness, we've got an additional three temporary ponds that you have to do during construction.
And are we going to do those open, like in the past? Are we doing the concealed like we did at Denmark?
So, excellent question. These will all be open because we have the space to do so.
Okay.
But when I go to the next example of Pools Mill, that's enclosed.
Okay.
So, it's a matter of space and topography?
Yes. So, going to our middle schools, Hendrix Middle School, design is well underway. Similarly to ACE and the Performing Arts Center, we anticipate procuring construction during the latter part of September, early October, to get construction started prior to winter weather arriving. Moving to the elementary schools, you'll see Pools Mill has progressed significantly since our groundbreaking. Steel is currently being erected, slab on grade being placed, and it's really like a checkerboard. Wherever the slab on grade is, that crew can't work where the steel crew is, so we're working in both places, and then we'll flop. The photo will, will better illustrate that and define that. Elementary School 23, while the property is acquired, it is contingent upon environmental due diligence, which is underway. And similarly, we have three projects that'll be starting after school ends, that being the elementary school, security and safety vestibules, the roof replacement at Chestedy, and Hill Center G-nets. Again, an aerial shot, now this is for Pools Mill, the intersection of Hertzville Road and Hurtbridge Road. These first two areas that you see in the cursor, slab on grade, is the placement for the gymnasium, the cafeteria, mechanical and electric room is there as well, so you start with the more challenging areas first, so that you can complete them all on time at the same time. To what Mr. Cleveland referenced, this is an underground detention system. You obviously can't see it, given that distance, but that's a pretty significant underground detention system compared to, the next photo better kind of illustrates, you see the footprint of what the entire school is, and that being the underground detention system. Again, parking in front, the loop bus road in back. On top of the detention system is the playground, and then this will be the playfield. Any questions on any of the projects?
Well, good stuff.
Thank you.
Keep the weather up. All right, next up, we have review board goals. And I think what we talked about this past year, we, instead of just setting our goals once a year, and then at the end of the year saying, oh, we did or didn't, we thought we would check in occasionally. If I can get mine to come up here. If we could just step through those. And again, these goals are set to align with our strategic plan and superintendent goals. If you look at the first one, collaborate with all stakeholders to further communities' knowledge and support for the school system, and we measure that by attending LSCs, I know we all are doing that, chamber and community meetings, I think we could check that off this past week, a number of community meetings, all of us have been doing those, parent advisories, several of us have been able to attend those as our schedule permits, school board and informational meetings, I think we're here. To continue to support the integration of personalized learning and social-emotional programs through the school system, I think we're addressing some of that in this year's proposed budget. Leadership conferences coming up, drug awareness meetings, I think Tom is one of us that always tries to make those at a minimum. Working well on that. Three, advocate for continued and initial funding for the QBE formula, teacher salaries, school safety personnel, resource offers, osophers, officers, counselors, and social workers, additional funding for safety issues. Well, I think we're checking a lot of these just tonight alone, and I think we all did our work with our state delegation this year, for sure, and obviously that. All right, and last but not least, increase understanding the future community growth plans in relation to how they affect the school system. And I think we've been having some meetings with county commissioners on our new school acquisition places and challenges of those. I think they're working well, but I think we need to keep going. Any thoughts, comments, things to improve?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, we've had a lot of discussions recently about the tax digest and how to better, what we can do as a school system to participate in that drawing of business to Forsyth County. So, I'm wondering if we already have it here, and we just need to fit it in somewhere, or if it's a different goal?
I think one way we're working, and I know Dr. Bearden and myself have been involved in several committee meetings with the, they now call forward Forsyth program with the Chamber of Commerce, with the Forsyth County Government, where they're working, hired a consultant, and are working very hard to attract the businesses and affect the digest. I think if you were at the state of the county, they did, that was the whole focus of that meeting. So, I think we are working on that, but you're right, it's, that definitely adjusts our budget, so it's something that needs to be a high priority.
Yeah, we just kind of make sure we either have it in one of these goals or add that goal.
I think maybe we could, at times, go and support, when they have the county commissioners are talking about the projects, we could maybe attend those meetings and speak in support of the projects they're doing. Helps us out, we're obviously the big benefit of the digest. Anything else?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I was trying to see if it really covered it, or if we need to reword it to make sure it's, says that.
It's part of three, too, when you talk about funding.
Three or four.
Well, we'll have the opportunity to look at that when we set goals for the new school year, but the bottom line, to your point, Chris, and I think, I think the board can absolutely say with confidence, you've accomplished all four of the goals you set out for this year.
Well, and I like that they're, they're, yeah, they're not just fluff, they're active hardcore.
Well, I think the fact that we decided, we, last year, went and aligned them with the strategic plan goals, with, you know, the way the central office did, started using the school base, it goes to central office, what do they do, and then what should our goals be to help make all that happen? I think it, I think it's just a reference and a, you know, says that we've actually done that, you know, that's, our goal is, is to support, you know, the school system as a whole, and it all came to fruition, I think, because we had, we were going in the right direction with everyone else.
And it's not too many that it's, well, this, although these are, this is a lot.
There's a lot, right.
This is a lot, but, yeah. All right, well, I think we'll repeat, continue to revisit these, and then we'll keep note and comments like Tom's, that as we go to modify these for the next year, that if we need to tweak them to, if they're totally different.
Right, because we changed, yeah. Didn't we change our timeline to go with the fiscal year?
Yeah.
The fiscal school year, rather than the calendar year, which it used to be? So, we should be revisiting these, right?
I think we do it earlier this...
July before, just saying what this, what the timeline is, right, for next year.
All right, any future agenda items? All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Nancy, all in favor? unanimous. Thank you.